Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a public hearing of the budget for the school year beginning July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. Pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education, notice of this meeting was sent to the New Jersey Star Ledger in Cablevision of Elizabeth on Thursday, April 20, 2024. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 North Broad Street, and pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present for this May 2, 2024, meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education Permanent Records. In order for the recording to accurately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from speaking while others are speaking. I also ask that you silence your sound of your electronic devices. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Board of Education. We are here. We are here this evening to hear the public express their views regarding the proposed 2024-2025 budget in accordance to New Jersey Statutes 18A:22-13. And I quote, "On a day and at the time and place so fixed, the Board of Education Estimates or Board of Education, as case may be, shall hold such public hearing, at which time the taxpayers and other interested persons shall have an opportunity to present objections and to be heard with respect to said budget, and amount of money necessary to be appropriated in the various items and purposes for which the same are to be appropriated for the use of public schools in the district for the ensuing ensuring school year." There will be a public portion of the parts, excuse me, there will be a public portion for the citizens to address the board. Participants for the public portion must sign in prior to the start of the public comments to have an opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and the reason that the person wants to speak, whether it's an agenda item or a general education comment. At this time, Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Here.
Carvalho.
Here.
Chavez. Jacobs. Marina Ortega.
Perez.
Nara.
Here.
Gunkavas Pastana.
Present.
Rivera. Bathless Dorshly.
Present, thank you. At this time, we can all stand up so we can do the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, to the back, sorry. I have a board member, Diane Barrosa, to lead us in the Pledge of Ethics. Oh, I apologize, I apologize, I apologize. At this time, we're going to listen to the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air! Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have board member Diane Barrosa lead us in the Pledge of Ethics, please.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public Schools Professional Learning Community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you, you may be seated. Again, I just wanted to thank everyone for attending our budget hearing this year. I thank you to all the board members who are present. Again, at the end of the budget presentation, there will be a comment or a portion for the community to ask any questions that they may have. At this time, I'm going to ask the superintendent to present the budget.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, for 2024-2025 school year.
I'd like to welcome members of our community, members of the Elizabeth Board of Education, and everyone that is here this evening to present the 2024 budget presentation. So I'd like to begin by thanking Governor Murphy. Governor Murphy made a commitment to maintaining New Jersey's status as the best in the nation public school system, and in doing that, he added an additional $908 million. That was applied directly to K-12 public schools, for a total of almost $12 billion. As an urban school district, we benefited from these additional funds, and my intent is to be able to share with our community how it is that we have applied this funding in order to support our children. I think it's important for our community to understand the level of dedication of our board members. Our board members spend countless hours, together with Mr. Kennedy and I, addressing the goals of our organization, and I think it's important for everyone to be able to recognize that. It is not just about your participation in the monthly board meetings, but all of the hours in committee meetings, all of the hours on Saturdays in board retreats, with a very clear focus, a laser-like focus, on teaching and learning in this organization. So for that, I thank you. It's important to be able to remind our community about our core beliefs, our focus on our students, on our teachers, on our leaders, on our families, and on our teams. Together, every member of our organization forms part of a family. We work diligently to ensure that we're providing the best education to our students, and I think that that is reflected in our core beliefs with regard to what our commitment is, what it is that we strive for each and every day. Also would like to be able to reference our five-year strategic plan. This plan focuses on our vision, attaining the highest-performing urban school district designation in the nation for our district, and that is what we work diligently towards. And most important is our promise, our promise to our students, to provide an innovative and personalized learning environment that ensures that every child achieves excellence. Our goals are college preparedness, career readiness for every child, and that is reflected in our 24-25 budget and in this evening's presentation. And then what I commonly refer to as our pillars, teaching and learning, social emotional wellness, workforce development, parent and community engagement, and organizational effectiveness, all supported by our foundation of our core beliefs and commitments, our focus on managed performance, empowerment, and, most important of all, the three Es, equity, expectations, and high, expectations and excellence. Each year, I talk about the steps of success. It reflects our internal and our external accountability system. This is what we share with our families. We talk about the expectations at the various grade levels as measured by various indicators, attendance, performance, extracurricular activities. And we ensure that we spend time with our families so that they can understand how it is that we support our children each and every day in the classroom. So now I turn to overview of our school system. We are currently serving 28,819 students across 37 schools. We are the second-largest urban school district in the state of New Jersey. Our student demographic is as follows. We serve 76.67 Hispanic children, 15.10% Black children, 1.55% Asian children, 6.49% white children, and other, which is defined as a Pacific Islander, .19%. Our student profile is defined as serving 57.5% of our total student enrollment, our general education students, 29.9% are multilingual learners, and 10% are special needs students, coupled with 2.6% children that are both multilingual learners and also special needs. So they are served both with bilingual services as well as special needs services. When we talk about our enrollment of 28,819, it's important to note that we have grown by 5,750 students in the past 13 years. When we, when we look back at the 22-23 school year, we were serving 28,442 students, and we have since grown to 28,819. We're incredibly proud of the growth in our four-year graduation rate of 87.9%. Last year, in June, we graduated a total of 1,628 students, and actually, correct myself, both in the June graduation and our August graduation, we're one of the few students that celebrates the accomplishments of our students during the summer months. So combined, 1,628 students. And in terms of free and reduced lunch, we are 81.50. And our workforce, we're comprised of 4,262 team members in our organization. So it's important to share with our community how our population has changed when we look at the 2021 school year and compare it to where we are right now. So if, take a look at the 2021 bar graph to your far left on your screen. 65.9% of our students in 2021 were general education students. When you compare it to where we are now in April, where we were as of April 30, we were at 57.5% general education students. So there is a decline in the general education population. However, let me point your attention to the next bar, the orange bar. In 2021, our multilingual learners were defined as 21.2% of our student population. And if you continue through the graph to where we are right now, we have grown from 21.2% to 29.9% multilingual learners. And I'm going to translate that in terms of the numbers. So we were at 5,873 multilingual learners. We are now currently serving 8,605 multilingual learners. So tremendous growth. Our next population, our special education population, we were at 11.4%, and we are now at 10%. But that combined, when we look at the next category of our multilingual students who also need special needs services, we were only at 1.5%, and we have, we are now at 2.6%. And that translates to going from 408 multilingual learner special needs students to 746 students. So important to be able to talk about the growth over time and how our organization meets the needs of the children. Next, it'd be my pleasure to introduce the budget highlights for the 24-25 school year. I'll be addressing the new facilities as well as additional staff and investments in our early childhood program. So first, we begin with the acquisition of Immaculate Conception JVJ STEM Academy Ninth Grade Annex. We have an opportunity to expand JVJ Academy by adding an additional 250 seats. Right now, Immaculate Conception has 12 classrooms that will house our ninth graders for next year, and in terms of the investment in our budget, we dedicated $4.4 million to ensuring that the ninth grade annex will be ready to welcome our ninth graders in September. Everything from facility upgrades, to the furniture, to the technology, everything that is needed to a school, because we have an obligation to address over-enrollment in our school district. We have an obligation to ensure that our children have the appropriate class size so that they can learn, so that they can thrive in their classrooms. And the way in which we have done this in this school district is by acquiring the parochial schools. And we're very fortunate to be able to have acquired all of the parochial sites in the city of Elizabeth so that they can serve our children. Next, another highlight of our budget is the acquisition of Santa Dalbert. Currently, Santa Dalbert's is an annex for School Number Nine. However, there is a second building that is part of Santa Dalbert's that has eight classrooms that will serve 170 additional students at School Number Nine, and we have committed $1.6 million to expand the number of seats at our elementary academy. Next, our budget highlight as it pertains to personnel, we will be funding an additional 106 new certified personnel in the amount of $8.7 million. That is both the salaries and the benefits. And as I shared with our community, the statistics as it relates to the population that we serve, it is reflected in the personnel that we have on our screen before us. So we will be adding 10 bilingual teachers, six ESL teachers, five art teachers, five music teachers, two preschool disabilities teachers, two general education teachers, 12 autism teachers, eight learning and language disability teachers, one moderate cognitive teacher, three resource teachers, six art teachers, six music teachers, additional, two English-language arts teachers, one math teacher, one science teacher, three career and technical teachers, and as we continue with 106 new certified personnel, two physical education teachers, two world language teachers, one vice principal, one English-language arts supervisor, one mathematics supervisor, one bilingual ESL supervisor, one full child study team comprised of an LDT learning disabilities teacher consultant, psychologist, social worker, and speech pathologist. We will also be funding 61 new non-certified personnel in the amount of $4.6 million. Safety and security of our schools is our top priority. We are adding 14 security guards to our schools, 23 multipurpose assistants, 18 classroom assistants for child development associates if they are in preschool classrooms, two accountants, two secretaries, and two nurses. And another budget highlight is it's important to share with our community the funding of our high-quality early childhood program that serves 2,773 and 4-year-olds for a total amount of $52.7 million. The $52.7 million is provided by the New Jersey Department of Education under what is referred to Early Childhood Program Aid. However, this funding does not cover all of the expenses of our early childhood program. The district supplements the program with an additional $8.7 million. And that $8.7 million ensures that we have our lunch assistants that serve our preschoolers. It covers the rent, it covers our transportation costs, our utilities, our wraparound program, it covers the salaries and benefits of 22 security guards, 23 custodians, two master teachers, two nurses, art, six, art, music, and physical education teachers, 13 preschool teachers, and 13 child development associate assistants for our preschool classrooms. American Rescue Plan. Back in 2021, the federal government allocated American Rescue Plan funds to school districts for the purpose, at that time, we were returning from the pandemic. But that funding wasn't solely towards the safe return of our staff and our students. It was also dedicated to learning loss, and also the opportunity to be able to address social, emotional, and academic needs. This funding covered a time period of May 2021 through September 2024. What was important to our Board of Education was how it is that we were going to sustain programs and services that were most impactful to our children, and those were lengthy conversations with our Board of Education members. So we conducted a very thorough analysis and evaluated those services, those programs, and we made a recommendation to ensure that we were addressing the issue of sustainability and ensuring that the 24-25 budget incorporated those services, those programs, personnel. So I'd like to be able to share with our community those services that we have embedded in our district budget. The total funding dedicated is $8.4 million, funded under American Rescue Plan and now embedded in our district budget. So it begins with sustaining ARP funding for 26 certified personnel in the amount of $3.2 million. Eight social workers, a district social worker, three guidance counselors, two homeless liaisons, one BCBA, three instructional coaches, two are instructional coaches, and one is an international baccalaureate coach, and two child study teams. Learning disabilities teacher consultant, psychologist, social worker, and speech pathologist. As we continue on, we also dedicated $5.2 million out of the $8 million towards the programs, and it began with sustaining professional development for our team members, for our teachers, by maintaining our partnership with Children's Literacy Initiative that provides valuable coaching to our teachers in 14 schools in the school district. Children's Literacy Initiative works not only with our teachers, but they work with our instructional coaches, with our administrators, and with the district leaders in implementing those critical strategies that help improve early literacy. The complement to that is our partnership with Carnegie Learning Mathematics Coaching from kindergarten all the way up through high school in all of the schools, ensuring that there is a coaching model that addresses mathematical concepts, strategies, and ensures that there is support all throughout the organization in the mathematics content area. As we continue on, we will be offering the Elsbridge Program for kindergarten through eighth grade and high school will serve our multilingual learners to increase their English language proficiency levels across the four domains, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. As we continue to serve our multilingual learners, the Point of Entry After-School Program for kindergarten through eighth grade, through 12th grade, excuse me, and this program is specifically designed for our new entrance at the elementary level, where they will receive leveled instruction in ELA, math, science, and social studies, and we are extending that all the way up through high school. And our Bilingual Achievement Strategies Program at the high school level, again, to support our English language learners in need of literacy and math support. These are children who struggle with their attendance, and therefore, we are providing those supports to fill those gaps. As we continue on, for our special needs students, the Academic Growth After-School Program, in order to ensure that our children increase their skills by engaging in interactive activities. We also have contracted registered behavior technicians that provide one-to-one behavioral interactions in order to teach communication, social, and living skills, in order to ensure that we are addressing those critical behaviors that children need that extra support. And of course, continuing on with our partnership with the New Jersey Transportation Department by providing bus passes for our displaced high school-aged students, ensuring that they have free access to busing. As we continue, we're also going to be offering the Career and Technical Education Work-Based Learning After-School Program at the high school level, assisting our students in obtaining those, the work-based proficiency in their chosen strand with the ultimate goal of achieving their industry certification. We will continue to offer our Social Emotional Learning After-School Program from kindergarten all the way up through high school, where group counseling sessions are provided to students after school, and our very effective Substance Abuse Alternative Saturday Program at the high school level, which supports our students through real-life discussions on prevention and self-regulation. As we continue, we will offer our Youth Athletics Program, both during the summer as well as during Saturdays during the school year, for our children in grades one through eighth grade, and this program focuses on those fundamental skills and competitive skills in various sports. The Arts Enrichment Saturday Program for our students in grades six through 12 will continue to be offered, providing our students to participate in a variety of workshops, access to art, musical theater, dance, instrumental music, and of course, sustaining our jazz ensemble. Incredibly talented students, and this extracurricular ensemble will focus on all genres of jazz, performing at a variety of concerts and competitions. As we continue, we're reminded of our foundation of our organization, that our, this budget was one that was built to follow the principles of our three Es, equity, high expectations, and excellence. So I turn now to new initiatives, and we are, as, at the present time, we we have Avid in thirty of our schools, however, Avid is at the middle school level. So we are introducing at the elementary level two new programs that Avid has to offer. The first is Avid Elementary. And this is an opportunity for, um, a pilot program at Dr. Albert Einstein Academy, School Number Twenty-nine, where the Avid Elementary Program that was, um, currently at School Number Eight as a K-eight program, this newly designed program is for kindergarten through fifth grade where children will learn about organization, study skills, communication, self-advocacy. And most important is the opportunity to expose our children to college and career opportunities at such a young age so that they can begin creating their career plans at an ear, at this early age. Avid Excel, also particularly, um, exciting opportunity where, uh, we will be providing an elective that supports instruction for our multilingual learners through academic language, reading, writing, language, academic vocabulary, college readiness skills. And I think what is really important about the Avid Excel Program is that it has a firm commitment to biliteracy, which is what we believe in here at the Elizabeth Public Schools. It is important to support a child in both their native language and also in the English language. And Avid and the Elizabeth Public Schools have that common goal. The Avid Excel Program will be piloted at School Number Twenty-five and School Number Twenty-seven. And we now move to new initiatives at our high school academies with a focus on career readiness. At Jefferson Arts Academy, the New Theater Career Strand. And this course develops the knowledge and experience in the technical aspects of theater production. So it's those critical elements of design, correct scenery, lighting, properties, sound, costume, hair, makeup, uh, design analysis, stage management, uh, production management. And this is really an opportunity to expand the, uh, theater career strand at Jefferson Arts Academy by adding this program. New initiatives that are being offered at our STEM Academy under the Biomedical Science Career Strand, Electrocardiograph Technology, designed to prepare our students for employment as electrocardiograph technicians, EKG technicians, cardiovascular technicians. This program offers a sequence of courses that provides rigorous content aligned to the state standards. And of course, what is, uh, most important is that technical knowledge that our students will gain, uh, that will give them an opportunity to explore additional careers. Pharmacy Technician is also, uh, being introduced in the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, school year. And this will be a pathway within our biomedical science strand for our students during their senior year. This certification, Dr. Barbosa is thrilled, thrilled, I see. This certification program will equip our students with that knowledge, those technical skills and those work habits so that they have that first exposure to the pharmacy field or a related area. Uh, the program will offer an added sterile compounding certification with this pharmacy technician program and it'll allow our students the opportunity to be able to work in a hospital pharmacy. A fantastic, um, opportunity lies ahead in our twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we are also expanding successful programs at, uh, two of our high schools. So at Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy, we are expanding our manufacturing program um, with IGNITE. IGNITE is a foundational skill development program and its purpose is to be able to, um, stimulate the student's interest in the field of manufacturing and industry. So students will learn about the various careers and experience them firsthand by performing those tasks in the, um, industry, uh, and virtual environments as well. And with that, our successful, uh, EMT program, Emergency Medical Technicians Program at Admiral William F. Paulsy Health and Public Safety Academy, our students will be eligible to earn their EMT certification. And of course, the topics that are included in that certification program are, uh, medical, legal and ethical issues, the human body, uh, baseline vital signs, pharmacology, respiratory, cardiovascular, diabetic emergencies, sample history, um, airway management, uh, scene size up. And this is an opportunity for students to be able to become familiar with initial assessments as well as the history of medical and trauma, uh, patients. So very successful, uh, partnership we have with the City of Elizabeth. And this is an opportunity to leverage our funding to be able to expand the Emergency Medical Technician Program. And also, uh, new this year is SCORE College Management System. So for our students, uh, historically, we had, uh, utilized Naviance at the high school level. With SCORE, we have the opportunity to expose students as young as sixth grade to various colleges that they would, uh, be able to align their interests to. So for students, that looks like a platform that allows them to very easily input criteria, the location they may be interested in attending, uh, the college or university, the size of the school, their personal interest, activities that they're interested in. Uh, they're, they have this opportunity to receive a list of matching schools and then they can click to learn about the school. It, they can take a virtual tour on SCORE and they can even see the posts from those respective colleges and universities in terms of the clubs and teams that they offer. Parents have access to SCORE and of course SCORE is guided by our amazing guidance counselors. Uh, and it helps to stimulate those conversations in terms of the area of interest for our students. And what is wonderful is the student is able to keep that information or be able to dismiss what may not be of interest up to them. So it keeps, uh, very much aligned to our priorities of keeping the student experience front and center, front and center. So on the screen before you, you see additional capabilities of SCORE and we are piloting, uh, that system, uh, at this time. Uh, and we will have the full complement for grades six through twelve in the new year. Next, we have, uh, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, FAFSA, expansion of our seminars. Historically, we have always provided, uh, seminars as part of our budget for our students and our parents. However, a reminder to our community that in January, Governor Murphy signed legislation requiring high school students, all high school students to complete the financial aid applications. So the best way in which for our students and our families to understand the importance of all of the funding that would be available to support their, uh, careers, their, uh, college choices is by ensuring that our students, uh, fill out the application. But in order to do that, we have to be able to expose our parents and our students to the importance of this new requirement. I always, uh, enjoy sharing with our community our partnerships. And I only have two slides dedicated to the multitude of partners that we work with in this organization. And I think it's wonderful when we, um, find organizations that are like-minded as, as we are. And we have the opportunity to work side by side on supporting all of our classrooms, all of our students. So on the screen before you are just a sampling of our K-12 partnerships. And as we continue on, additional partnerships that we have that have benefited our organization greatly and as well as, uh, referencing our dual enrollment programs, opportunities our students have to be able to earn college credits while in high school. And next we turn to some of the highlights from our, um, operations budgets. So we begin with, uh, funding two point two five million in REAPoint envelope. It's an opportunity to be able to address, um, the bricks that, uh, cover our schools, correct, and ensuring, uh, that they are properly maintained. So as you can see here, two point two five million dollars is dedicated, uh, to ensuring we are shoring up all of the brick exteriors on our schools. And the schools are listed on the screen before you. And that also includes a central office and one of our warehouses as well. Next, we're dedicating four point seven million in roof replacement and coating at the schools that you see before you, School Number Nineteen, Twenty-five, our Early Childhood Center, School Fifty, um, our Paulsy Annex, our Children's Welcome Center, our Dunn Sports Center and our, one of our warehouses. So that's a debt, we're dedicating four point seven million to ensuring, uh, we have roof replacement taking place in the upcoming school year. Next, we're allocating two point eight million to asphalt replacement at all of the sites that you see before you on the screen as well as funding one million in painting projects. So the entire building, School Nineteen and the School Nine Annex will be painted. And then we also have taken on additional projects as it relates to painting classrooms, cafeterias, offices at School Number Sixteen, at School Number Twenty-One, at School Number Twenty-Five. As we continue on, dedicating six hundred thousand in hallway floor replacement at School Number Nineteen and School Number Twenty-Six, followed by dedicated funding of four hundred thousand in gym floor replacement at School Number Twenty-Five and our Early Childhood Center, School Number Fifty-Two, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. As we continue on, uh, it's important to be able to attend to the needs of our team members, our food and nutrition department, our food service workers as in schools where you may not have the necessary equipment to facilitate bringing the breakfast, the lunch to those upper floors. So we're dedicating four hundred and fifty thousand to the installation of a small freight elevator intended to carry food at School Number Sixteen. We're, uh, we've, we're addressing, uh, the replacement of doors at our Paulsy Academy. And the funding is in a total amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in order to replace the doors. We're dedicating a hundred and twenty thousand for bathroom upgrade at School Number Nineteen and School Number Twenty. We're funding a hundred and twenty thousand for outdoor seating replacement at our main complex, our Dwyer Academy and Paulsy Academy as well as School Number Nine and School Number Two, which are the picnic tables that are outside of the school, replacing those to ensure that our children have a place to be able to sit and enjoy during recess. And this was a priority for our board to ensure that these areas were being addressed. When we turn to safety and security, uh, begin by introducing a new initiative. And, uh, it is our Security Officer Registration Act Training. That is referred to as SORA, training that will be provided to one hundred and seventy-five security guards, um, in our district. It will be in partnership with the Elizabeth Police Department, where we will be providing the required training, uh, to ensure that we are supporting our security guards as critical team members. We're also dedicating thirty thousand dollars for the installation of a security gate at School Number Twenty-Three. We are funding two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in additional security cameras at the schools that are on the screen before you. And this has been an ongoing, uh, commitment from our board to ensuring that we're reviewing all of the schools and locations in, uh, collaboration with our security department, identifying those areas where additional cameras would serve as well. As we continue on, uh, we are upgrading the electrical wiring and panels for the rollout of our electric school buses. And transportation is critical, correct? We, uh, transport, uh, children, um, all throughout the city. Uh, this is an opportunity to now see the potential of the electric buses in our community. And for that, we have to prepare for that, ensuring we're updating our infrastructure. It is my pleasure now to be able to introduce Mr. Harold Kennedy, our school administrator. School administrator.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening, a little bit about the numbers. Uh, we've off to a great start with new stuff, new initiatives and, but the budget is the budget. So here we go. This slide gives a, uh, a look at the timeline to put the budget together. It starts right after Thanksgiving in the Finance Department, where we gather input from stakeholders. For my department, that means, um, taking everybody of those four thousand employees and taking their twenty-three, twenty-four salaries and rolling them over into the twenty-four, twenty-five budget system at contractual rates, moving up steps and then, um, adding on their benefits. So that's, that's the start in November. Then Phase Two is determining the needs based on October fifteenth enrollment. And what that encompasses, beginning in December and going into January, the directors sit with the building administrators and go class by class. And we have the enrollment from the October fifteenth count and determine the needs of that building based on that enrollment count. How many classrooms, how many teachers, so on and so forth. That continues on from December through, um, January under Phase Three, where there's face-to-face meetings with all of our principals. And they also review the existing inventories in the books, in the buildings and the requests. And then come, um, February, we meet face-to-face with all the instructional and operator, operational directors to determine what their needs are. They put in requests, but we also look back to see twenty-three, twenty-four, what they actually spent, what their proposed budgets were and how twenty-four, twenty-five matches up to that. Um, that continues on in Phase Four with a line-by-line department budget review, allocation of funds within each individual school. And then, um, the Finance Department compiles all that data, puts it into a user-friendly format for presentation to various, um, people in our organization. The first thing we do is have it reviewed by our financial consultant. He looks at every line by line also with us and sees things that might not, that we may not see from our vantage point. And then the big thing that happens in the beginning of March is, um, collaboration with our Finance Committee. Three, four, five times, late hours in the night, Zoom, Zoom meetings and so on and so forth. Which brings us to the point where we're waiting for state aid at the end of February. So then that state aid comes in, hopefully in this year as in the past, it was very favorable to us and brings us to this, uh, budget hearing this evening. So another way, some of the other things that were in that timeline is, um, as I said before, we look at prior year's spending data, we look at the school-based needs, individually, classroom, principals, enrollment. We also go back to our strategic plan, as the superintendent showed with the pillars of, um, how we accomplish our strategic plan. Enrollment in data projections, as I said before, staffing based on those enrollment projections. And also the facility needs that, um, are over fifty-four buildings. Um, it's quite a, quite a facility review we do during the budget process. So that comes, comes to fruition with the announcement of state aid at the end of February. And what that calculates to on a revenue basis is our budget is seven hundred and fifty-nine million, three fifty-nine, nine eighty-two. And the biggest piece of that is our state aid of six hundred and forty million, eighty-four percent. The next biggest thing is our federal aid of forty-four million. The local levy and the balance appropriation, the local levy is about fifty-nine million and miscellaneous revenue is three point one million dollars. So what do we do with that? We, of course, we appropriate and expend it. So this chart, once again, a balanced budget, the expenditures equal the revenues, seven fifty-nine, three fifty-nine, nine eighty-two. But that is a total of, um, a combination of federal and state and local funds in the general fund. So the general fund's budget of that seven fifty-nine is six hundred and sixty-two million. The special revenue fund is ninety-six million dollars. of that $759 is $662 million. The special revenue fund is $96 million. That's where all our grants are accounted for. So within that $662 million, 75% of the expenditures go to salary and benefits of approximately $500 million. The remainder is what we determine to be non-salary, or 25% of that $662, 162 million. And of that 162 million non-salary, 70% is covered by five categories. Tuition is $41 million, transportation, $28 million, instructional supplies, $22 million, repair and maintenance of our buildings, $17 million, and energy and utilities, $10 million. So 25% of that non-salary of $162 adds up to $118 under those five categories. On the chart, what that, what shows is that 75% of our total budget of $759 million goes to instruction, $571 million. The next biggest piece is operation and maintenance of plant, $79 million. Other is a combination of community services, employee benefits, transportation, capital outlay, and debt service for $85 million. And administration is $22,639,531. Same percentages coming from the chart, but a little easier to see it. Instruction is 75.3%, where it should be in a school district. Operation and maintenance of plant is 10.5%. Benefits, transportation, capital outlay is 11.3%, and administration is 3% of that $759 appropriated expenditure. Another way to look at expenditures is on a per pupil basis. The state uses its software to calculate our per pupil based on the data that we input into our budget. So for Elizabeth, our comparative per pupil cost on that $759 million appropriation is $22,825 per student. And similar to the other chart, instruction is the biggest piece of that per pupil. It's $13,425. Equipment costs are $97. Operation and maintenance of plant, $3641. Athletics is $179 dollars per pupil. Support services, $3,625. And the, and the per pupil cost that the state focuses focuses in on is administration, which for us this year is $1,858. What they look at is, you're allowed to have $2,585. That's the northern regional cost per student for administration, the allowable cost. You can't spend more than that per pupil. And in Elizabeth, we're under that. We're at $1,858 per student on administration. I always like to say we don't create our budget and avoid. We have our financial consultant. We have our Finance Committee looking over our shoulder at the same time. But we also have the Department of Education. We have to follow their rules, their software, their budget tax, budget, budget compliance book. We follow the instructions incorporated into that data collection manual published by the NJ DOE Office of Finance. And following these rules and using the software to check and balance us, the budgets are, and information submitted for approval to the Executive County Superintendent and the Executive Business Administrator are completely and correct in accordance with their rules. Finally, we believe in an open and transparent budget process. All Board of Education meetings are open to the public, and agenda and meeting minutes are available at our website, wwwepsnj.org. Copies of the full budget are available in my office in the Mitchell Building at 500 North Broad Street, or via email. It's in a PDF format. I can send it to anyone requesting it. It's also will be posted on the budget district's website tomorrow, actually. So thank you for the time. So let me say a few things about the numbers.
I would like to close by extending my thanks to everyone. A special thank you to our Board of Education for your hard work and effort in seeing us through this process of developing this budget. A special thank you to my cabinet, to our school business administrator, our comptroller, our assistant superintendents. A special thank you to our instructional directors and our operations directors, our school principals, vice principals, right down to all of the folks in our organization, our teachers, that play a pivotal role in ensuring that they're capturing the needs assessment for their respective classrooms. Everyone is involved in developing the budget for a district, and we cannot do this work alone. It is only through the efforts of our administrators, through the efforts of all of our team members in our schools that we're able to present a budget such as this. The presentation ends with our accomplishments for this, for this school year to date, and this is going to be uploaded to our webpage for everyone's enjoyment. But I wanted to be able to say thank you to everyone. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent and Mr. Kennedy for your presentation. I too just want to say a few things. I definitely want to thank the Chairperson of the Finance Committee, Mr. Jacob, Jerry Jacobs, as well as his committee members on the Finance Committee, Board Member Stephanie Concalves-Pastana, and Vice President Stan Neron, along with the entire board as well. But I wanted to thank you guys for working with our superintendent and her cabinet and making sure that the budget is what it is today. I also want to thank our superintendent for all the work you've done, all the hours you put in, especially today, to make sure that we are moving towards the right direction in our district. And again, all of your cabinet, I'm not naming individual people, but to your cabinet, to your teachers, to all of our staff in our district who assisted in any way possible, thank you, thank you, and thank you. At this time, I'm going to open up the floor to see if any board members would like to say something, starting with our Chairperson, Jerry Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to also echo your gratitude and thanks to our Madam Superintendent, Mr. Kennedy, and Mr. Maholtra, along with our assistant superintendents, the directors. You know, it's a joint effort, you know, our principals and every person is involved. I'd also like to thank my committee chair people, committee people, Commissioner Stephanie Concalves-Pastana, and Commissioner Stan Neron. I also would like to point out, to my understanding, I think, Mr. Kennedy, that this budget is also a 0% tax increase as well.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. I didn't mention it's the 10th year that the tax levy's been the same.
Yeah, so this is the 10th year that Mr. Kennedy and his staff, Mr. Maholtra, have been able to put forth a budget of this size with a 0% tax increase to the citizens of Elizabeth, New Jersey. I also find it very encouraging, the fact that we were able to keep approximately $8 million in ARP front programs and positions in the current budget for this year. And we have to note that, that those funds will be running out at the end of this year. So next year will be maybe a very difficult year for us. We are very, I'd also like to say I'm very grateful to the governor and also to our legislative district team, Senator Cryin, Assemblywoman Annette Keano, Assemblywoman Reginald Atkins, for the work that they do down in Trenton to make sure that our district is adequately funded so that we can provide the services that our children desire for the education that they need to receive. I'm also very excited with the new programs and initiatives that we saw, especially, you know, I don't want to take any steam away, but I want to give, I want to give accolades to our Commissioner Barbosa and her passion and desire for the programs that she initiated at the JBJ STEM Academy, because that's one of the purposes that we are, that we choose to serve with this district, to have these type of options available to our children, sort of to prepare, to prepare them for their future. I think I've covered everything. So I'd like to say thank you again. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other board members? All right. Thank you again. At this time, the microphones are open for public comments to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call the individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in sheet. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question a board member individually. Each speaker shall comply in all respects with Board Policy 9322, and there are copies by the sign-in sheet. The following rules shall apply: timelims will be strictly enforced, no personal attacks on individuals or naming of individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting, and comments will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I'll call Ms. Maria Lorenz.
Good evening. At this presentation, we touted a graduation rate of 87.9%. That's still way below the state target level, which we haven't met in quite some time. So I didn't see anything in your budget to address our graduation rate. Similarly, the dropout rate from 9 to 12 never met a state target. We are at hovering at 2 to 2.7% for the dropout rate. There's nothing there to remediate or address any programs to address that concern. Elizabeth, like I said, always fell short in graduation rates. I think it's quite disingenuous as well to say and separate special education at 10%, and 2.6%, I believe I saw, was the figure for SPED and ML. That's very disingenuous to show that there was a reduction of 8.3% in special education classifications, and very misleading and gaslighting to the citizens to say that you have an 82% increase in ML and special needs students. That should have been reported together. They're not separated out. The 0% tax increase, this is something that this board has touted for quite some time. I guess the question is, who is the cost being passed to? Because somebody's picking up that tab. Don't understand why we need more staff in special services when our classification rate isn't quite high at all compared to other districts, and it keeps dropping. No youth athletic summer programs. Don't know what programs really exist for the special needs community, as it seems that Special Olympics seems to be quite selective, should be actually all categorized together with athletics, and they should have an opportunity to also play with their neurodiverse peers. The college and career readiness, the state is leading in students in AP and IB courses, students with disabilities, actually. In the dual enrollment course, the state is leading in that in English learners and homeless students, where we're failing in that category. School 28, additional targeted support for African-Americans. Students see anything that would address that. Halsey targets support for consistently underperforming groups of students with disabilities. They were cited for that by the state. And Thomas Edison, comprehensive support for low graduation rate. Nothing in your budget addresses any programs for that. And I'm still wondering why you didn't report on the buildings that have asbestos abatement. A lot of parents were not informed that their children were attending schools where there was asbestos present, and they did not receive notices that that has happened. So I guess you should possibly double down or triple down on your budget for attorney fees, because I'm pretty sure there's going to be a lot of parents that might sue you. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I close the public portion of the meeting. All right. Since there are no comments before, Mr. Kennedy, may I have a, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the 2024, 2025 school year budget?
Motion to adopt the 2024, 2025 school, Elizabeth school budget.
Mr. Kennedy has something to say?
Yes, there's actually...
I don't know what's going on the feedback.
Actually, resolution 1 to... Good. There's two resolutions before you. We're required to also adopt the early childhood budget that's incorporated into that first budget we're adopting. We can adopt both at the same time, yes?
Let's try this again. May I have a motion to adopt the 2024, 2025 school year budget, including the 2025, 2024, 2025 early childhood budget as well?
Motion.
I make a motion.
It's been probably, it's been moved in probably second to approve the 2024, 2025 school year budget, including the early childhood budget. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Is this Ms. Chavez's name? Oh, thank you. Shevres.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Maureen Ortega. Neron.
Yes.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes.
Rivera.
Yes.
Bathles-Dorshley.
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, everyone. Again, just want to thank everyone for attending. Thank you to all our staff members who are here for attending and being in the audience. We appreciate you. I hope you guys have a wonderful evening. Enjoy the weather. Again, God bless and take care. Oh, no. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
Certainly do.
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second that motion.
It's been moved in probably second to adjourn tonight's meeting at 6:51 PM. Roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Carvalho.
Yes, congratulations.
Shevres.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Jacobs.
Yes, good night.
Neron.
Yes, good night. Congratulations. Great job.
Concalves-Pastana.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Rivera.
Yes.
Bathles-Dorshley.
Yes, thank you, and have a wonderful evening. Take care.